Well, good evening, everyone. We invite you to... Glad that you're with us tonight. We don't usually have this large of a crowd. So it's always good to look out and have some people there. Glad you're with us tonight. For our work session, we begin our meetings with a moment of silence. So we'll invite you to please join with us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Ms. Robinson, you want to come up and introduce all these guests?
Good evening, and welcome to the morning meeting. Today, I have brought some special friends from kindergarten. As part of their self-care standards for kindergarten, they have to say that pledge allegiance, and what better time for a real world application than tonight? So they are going to come up front and be introduced by their teacher, Ms. Wood, and then do the pledge allegiance. I have Stella Ariaca, Megan Robertson, Ashley Langley, Anna Mae Mayland. I have Megan Sanders and Noah Wirth. Y'all stand for the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. That's probably the best one we've had this year.
All right, and tonight, I'm also doing the JMB highlight for our school. I'm Asher Robertson, the principal. And back in February, I took seven special ladies with myself to New Orleans for a conference called Get Your Teach On. And we had an amazing time, and then we got stranded in the snow and the ice. So that was really fun, staying in New Orleans, a couple of extra days. But we definitely made the most of it and started planning for all of our year. And these ladies have come back and truly embodied the Get Your Teach On foundations and truly been that grassroots effort and getting it going within our school building. It's all been a big birthday to talk about what one thing that they're doing in their classroom, but to also be honored for the amazing job they've done so far. So I can have those ladies come up. And I will just introduce them and make them say their one thing as I can there.
One thing your concept of the conference we went to was setting the stage to engage our students, and that's giving them engaging activities in the classroom, but also balancing that with rigor and really challenging them. And one question they left us that really got me was, what are you doing to kind of keep your students guessing every day? What is Ms. Adams going to do today? So I have tried to plan those engaging activities, at least for one thing per subject area, since I've been, what can I do to keep my students guessing in math this week, or keep my students guessing in ELLA, or social studies, or time to engage them, but also to push up the rigor in the classroom?
And Ms. Julie Burl.
So once we got back from Get Your Teach On, I decided to kind of amp up my social studies curriculum, and so I'm focusing on appreciating, not appropriating things. So that's kind of interesting in kindergarten, but that's what I'm focusing on right now.
And then there's Erin Barlow, who could not be here today, and Ms. Patty Grantz.
As April said, talking about engagement and keeping the children engaged, and that has been a focus of mine, always, but you're always trying to find a stronger, better way to keep students engaged. And one of the ways that they talk about it with Get Your Teach On is through room transformation. So since we've been back, I've done two room transformations, very simple, nothing extravagant, but it creates a sense of magic and excitement with the students. They've kind of learned now if the blinds are down that morning, but they can't see through the door, that something's going on in the classroom, and it's going to change. And our most recent was a carousel of learning. So I've created a canopy. Do not tell Far Marshall. I created a canopy with... It was 22 inches, not 24. Around, and we have courses at the end of each table. And so it was just a carousel of learning, and then we had music where they transitioned, and they had tasks to accomplish at each table.
And then Ms. Hillary Williams.
I'm a fourth grade teacher at James Brown, and so one of the activities that I have started implementing more in my classroom is just the use of music. Background music while we're doing things, having that going on, but then also incorporating content into music through writing different song lyrics. We kind of all think about when a song comes on the radio, even without trying to memorize it, we know the words. So if we can put that important content and those vocabulary terms into songs and tunes that students are already familiar with, then they can remember the content better as well.
And then Ms. Sheila Mayberry could not be here today due to her prior engagement. And then Ms. Erin Wood.
Like, you know, she teaches kindergarten, but one thing that I took away from it was building relationships with the children is the number one important. And also to make sure your classroom is a place where they can take risks, because that's really important for them as they learn to be able to take those risks. And that's part of their learning and how they interact with other people, too. But that was just one thing, is to make sure that we are taking, letting our kids take risks.
And then, school-wide, we have implemented what's called GEMS-4. And each letter stands for something different. So G is get out of your seat. So when we expect the teachers to be out of their seat, we also expect the kids to get out of their seat to respond to their answer. And while they're doing that, the E is for eye contact. So all eyes are on that one speaker, and teaching the train to turn to that person or that teacher. M is manners, using that throughout the day, not just in the classroom. And then S is social interaction. So teaching them the appropriate way to give a handshake, to communicate with someone, and be able to close that conversation and walk off from that brief introduction that they've done, and be able to do that with any guests that walk into the classroom or into the school building as well. So a little bit of soft skills interwoven into the regular curriculum that will be with them for their entire life. So I'm very proud of these ladies, because these ladies have taken this concept and really woven it into our current existing curriculum, but done a magnificent job not only in their own classroom, but then also creating that grassroots effort and pushing it on to other people. And it has really been a spark and a passion that has been created at JMB that we're very excited about and very excited to continue. So we thank you for having us today.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Inabon, and I visited James Brown a couple of weeks ago, and I got to go in Ms. Grant's class. She told you about her carousel, but when I was there, it was an operating room. And I think that may have been the other transformation.
They didn't lay you on a table.
They didn't lay me on a table, but it was good.
Well, good. I'm just surprised you let all of them go to New Orleans together, too. Well, thank y'all for being with us. We really appreciate what you do every day. And next, we have a special recognition, and I'll leave that to Dr. Thorson.
Ms. Douglas can give the specifics. If you want to come down, we've got a certificate to present to some folks. We don't... Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We didn't do this shit. So they're fine.
They'll just get a warm handshake.
They'll get a warm handshake. We'll certainly do that.
Okay, I'm also going to ask the PIP teachers to come up, if you don't mind. Just, I'm going to put them on the spot a little bit. But Crank's gone down. Okay, so we are... I'm Ann Douglas, and I'm over the preschool intervention program. And these are five of my eight, or our eight teachers that serve the children with developmental delays and special needs, three and four-year-olds, throughout the school district. And we have two special guests here. I would like for you guys to come up. So these two wonderful people, Missy Payne and Donnie White, are the coordinators of the Seneca Jeep Fest. And through some communications with the Autism Night in the Park, which took place in the fall, we were able to partner with the Seneca Jeep Fest, and they raised money for our preschool special needs program. And each of the eight teachers got $250 to buy specialized equipment for the children that they're serving this year. And so we really appreciate your support and look forward to the partnership in the future. Yes, absolutely. And then I'm going to put the teachers on the spot and just get them to say a little bit about some of the equipment. And a lot of the equipment is the same throughout their classrooms, but just real quick so that you guys will know where your hard work, you know, where it went to.
For our classroom, we bought two cube chairs that come with trays, and they're just little tiny chairs that the kids can sit in and can eat off the tray, and they can do different works.
A lot of our little ones don't have that whole spatial thing down yet. So those cube seats come in very handy. And that is Jessica Norris, who's at Orchard Park. And then we have Becky Smeller, who is at Rabanel.
And we did some sensory stuff. We got a little portable sensory tray that the kids could do, and some chewies and some fidgety stuff, and different little sensory tools for the kiddos.
Jill Cook from Northside.
We also did some sensory things for children to chew on or sit on, some weighted black blankets to help comfort them when they feel distressed. And I bought a special little hunkie that they can hold this way, and it's one of the little...
Whitney Merk from Blue Ridge.
The only thing that I think I did, other than what they've already mentioned, was I got a mini trampoline, so that those kids that have some vestibular stimulation issues can get that out and have that to do in the classroom. Even on Rainy Day.
More importantly, on Rainy. And Aldra Morris is from Farrick.
And I got another cube chair that I can sit in if they're not... Helps them to wear their spaces and that little tray around them. Some of them that can talk, a lot of them can't talk yet, but some of them that can talk, they tell me it's comfy to have that tray around them, know where their space is. And then I also got the weighted lap blankets, and again, just makes them feel comfortable and less fidgety.
That's great. Thank you for...
Thank you very much. Yeah, so really do appreciate it.
September 8th is the one for the...
The one in the fall. So we'll be looking forward to it again. We got it on calendar.
We appreciate your input.
All right. Thank you very much.
Oh, if you'll... Yes, Mr. Hamby's got quite a following on social media, so we're happy to help advertise.
They'll sometimes be nice.
We have a Facebook page, so...
We can do flyers to the schools and that. You'll comment if we get back, that'd be great.
Once we get all our flyers made.
That's great. Thank y'all, we appreciate it.
Next on our agendas, we have need a motion to approve tonight's agenda for the work session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the March 12, 2018 work session agenda.
Second.
Our motion is second. Anybody see anything needs discussion? None, all in paper. It's unanimous. Next, a public comment. Did anyone...
We gave out one speaker, Roberts.
Okay, Ms. Mayer.
Hi. I'd like to speak to the board about school safety. We have grandchildren in Northside, we have grandchildren in the middle school. I'll just give you a little bit of my background. Graduated from high school in '65, drafted in November that year, spent a year in a combat infantry unit in Vietnam, came back, joined law enforcement, spent 27 years in law enforcement. Started in a city police department, went to a new police department in '73, made chief in '80, stayed till '83, moved on to the Somerset County, New Jersey prosecutor's office as deputy chief of detectives, and retired in '94. My wife and I have lived here in Oconee County since 2005. And after that horrible incident happened in Newtown, Connecticut, five years ago, my wife and I came to a board meeting. I wasn't here in time to address the board, but a couple of board members spoke to me later, and I addressed my concerns about school safety, but I never heard anything back. I got the impression that it was, would never happen here. Well, when it happened in Newtown, excuse me, Townville, I spoke to Steve Hamby on the telephone a few times, very helpful, about school safety and resource officers and so on. And I guess there's one resource officer that covers Northside and two other schools, rotates around. Well, there's nothing more important than our children's lives in these school systems with these horrible things that are going on today. I told Steve that I would volunteer my time one day a week to go over to the school and just hang around the office, because we cut the response time down to zero. So we really need resource officers in each school full-time. And I just heard a couple of weeks ago, Israel had this problem back in the '60s, and they eliminated it. Well, I found out how they eliminated it. They put an armed army officer inside the front door of the school, and he watched everybody that came in and went out. So one thing that has to be done, the school doors have to be locked down, one way in and out. If it's electric locks and God forbid a fire, push a button, unlock the doors, or teachers have a card reader to unlock the doors. But I really feel that something has to be done, because God forbid this happens again, especially here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We agree with you. And it does seem like every time there's an incident, you know, people meet, they talk about it. At Townville, we hired a few more resource officers, but there's not any, just one thing we can do that'll guarantee it stops. There's a whole multitude of issues that I think need addressing, from home situations to counseling, to adding resource offices and safety and so on, so on. So we are working, and we are considering that.
Sure, I would love to answer a couple, or just respond a little bit. Since 2005, I think you would see many, many, many changes in our schools, particularly our elementary schools. We do have all of our schools locked during the school day. If you'll notice, when you leave this building, all doors have to have what's called a panic device going out. So we can't lock people in our buildings because of fire. So they have to have that bar on the door that you can always push to get out, but they are all locked from the other side. We even lock the front door now, and people have to use essentially a doorbell to get in. So we've greatly improved the safety just of our facilities. In our elementary schools now, when you go in the front door, you're just in a little vestibule, and you have to go through the office to get access to the hallway. So that's another safety measure. So we've greatly improved the facilities with regard to safety. We are still not where we want to be with school resource officers, and we are considering additional for this, next year's budget. Ultimately, we'd like to be one-to-one with the school resource officer in every school, and we will work to that end. But we are also in ongoing talks with our sheriff's office right now. As a matter of fact, we're going to be discussing things further tomorrow about things, other things that we might can do to enhance safety. So we certainly don't want to pretend it's never going to happen here. And I don't disagree with you that having SROs is probably, I think that's, nationwide, that's maybe the one thing that there's universal agreement on, that every school should have an SRO. And we're certainly going to work in that direction, as well as do other things, as Mr. Inabon said, because there's not one... You know, there was an SRO in Florida, and it didn't stop it. So there's not one thing, but there are many things we need to be thinking about, and we are thinking about them, and we're appreciative that we have community members that think about them as well. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Doc. And Steve has my information, but I can...
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're in division reports. Dr. Thorson.
Yes, and I have a change. Of course, I've spoken to you individually about this a little bit, just with the transitions that are coming up in the district office. It's kind of a slight change, but there is a change in the organizational chart, which happens to be a policy. So this is a policy CCE. It would be a change in that. And essentially, it would move the financial officer, Ms. Moore. Right currently on the org chart, she falls under operations. Mr. Hamby, this would pull her out to assistant principal, assistant superintendent level position called chief financial officer. And of course, you all know that Ms. Williams has decided to retire. And Ms. Williams' job, so it's essentially switching Ms. Moore, the position that Ms. Moore's in with the position Ms. Williams is in, as far as the org chart levels go. And over the course of the next couple of weeks, some of the titles may also change. So this would be just presenting it to you tonight, this would be first reading next week, and then the final reading on this policy change would be in April. So I guess what I'm saying is this could change a little bit more over the coming weeks as we kind of work out what we're going to do with the instruction, the titles in the instruction office with Ms. Simmons. And again, just something for you to consider with the situation we're in right now. I think this is how I would like to have the team here at the office organized.
Anybody have questions for discussion? And if you see anything, please talk to Dr. Thorson prior to next week's meeting. Next, we have Mr. Hamby.
Yes, and we have your February financial report, which we always start off with, and you see where Ms. Moore shared that with you. So if there are questions that you have about that, we'll be happy to try and answer those.
I did want to call your attention to the revenue. You see that in February, we got $25 million in tax revenue, and of course, that's our favorite taxpayers, but regarding that, for different powers, $18 million, $300,000. So very nice check for us, that.
Well, something on the checks I wanted to ask about, see if I can find it. In the frontline technologies group, it says FIFA Medicaid billing. They bill Medicaid for us, or...
They do. They bill frontline...
We don't bill direct nurses and...
It's not for nurses. This particular one is for speech therapists and OTs, ETs, for the work that they do.
Okay.
It's not nurses. We have a different contract for nurses.
But matter of fact, with, we don't direct bill with Medicaid for anything now.
No, we don't. We have, Healthmaster does it more than nurses, and then Frontline does it for the others.
Mental health counselors, we still haven't got anything worked out, other than the ones that are in...
They're still not open to us right now?
The ones that are employed by the Department of Mental Health.
That's correct.
They can.
They can, but they're billing through mental health. That's correct.
The Gaston Outdoor Advertising, we got a sign up for Seneca?
Yes, that was a...
You wondering about that?
Well, I mean, it's paid for with the advertising it currently has on it. And it's paid for, plus made some money for the athletic department in its first...
But we're not putting any money into it. It's run through for us. We didn't, we're not using that money to pay it.
It goes through us.
They raised the money between their Bass tournament and their ads that they sold on there, and it's already turning a profit for them.
If you've ever been to Westside High School in Anderson...
Yes, I've been past it Friday.
...and seen the big billboard that says, "Thanks to our supporters." Seneca heard how profitable that was.
Has done that.
And they chose to do the same thing.
Isn't it quite as big as Westside's? It's big, though. And they had to go through the zoning with the CD and that kind of thing to get it approved. You know, it is definitely going to be financially supportive, that athletic program for sure, with advertising on there.
Okay, good.
They pay for it all.
And they're making money.
And they're making money.
As long as they're making money, and we're not having to pay.
We're not paying it with taxes.
They pay for the survey and everything. Any others on...
Any other question? Okay, you want to do total conduct?
I do, and just as a general statement, I wanted to say that, you know, it's 20 pages, and there's not a tremendous amount of change in it. There's a basic philosophical change, is going from category one, two, and three to levels. That was in consultation with the APs. What Ms. Hughes does is she meets with a representative from every school, it's typically an assistant principal that does a lot of the discipline, but they have a meeting up here, and they go through it. But to get it in line with the terminology that we use with law enforcement, I guess if they just change that and make it consistent as the levels. Another change in there was correcting the part where it still said Code Academy to Oconee Academy. And then, if I remember correctly, the amount for a level two theft, you know, was below $100, level three's above $100. And so there were just a few basic changes like that. Nothing that I think would be controversial or, you know, earth-shattering would be changed. I'm happy to try to answer any questions, or if you would like, at the next meeting, when you are going to do the first reading, I could have Ms. Hughes come and answer questions, however you feel comfortable with. I don't think there's anything in there that's a drastic change.
I made it at least halfway through before I got sleepy.
Changing from one level to another in here with different, the discipline process.
Right, it does. Because instead of, what we've done in the past is said it was a category one offense. Now we're changing to a level one. So we had categories one, two, and three, one being the least severe, three being the most severe. And now we just have a level one, two, and three. And that gets that in line with the language that the legal folks like you use. I mean, that was really what it amounts to. It's not like we moved around a lot of things and put a two and a three and that kind of thing. And then there are guidelines for the punishment for a level one, a level two, and a level three. We're really working hard on a, elementaries have one that seems to be pretty consistent with the buses and the school. Really working hard on a discipline matrix where we are more consistent across the district with, you know, if you're at this middle school and you do something that you're not supposed to, and then, you know, the next one's at another middle school and they do something, the punishments are very similar. You know, kind of like we do with the Athletic Policy Manual, we put everybody on the same page. Even though we have this code of conduct, there's still some wiggle room for them in there that they can use, and they still can use their discretion in some areas.
Right, because what it looks like where your power school code is, in other words, if I do something wrong, you're going to give me a 580, regardless of where... In other words, possession of marijuana, that'd be entered into my student record?
Yes.
Is it, in other words, it's a consistent code used throughout?
That would be a consistent code.
Because the state does that.
That was pretty clear.
For state purposes.
If a student had marijuana possession, that's, there's not really a gray area on that.
Right.
But whereas in some of the lower-level offenses, you know, something could be categorized as horseplay, but it could also be categorized as a fight, you know? So that administrators still have to make judgments on how serious certain things are and different things like that. But now some of the more serious ones, it's cut and dry. You know, if you get caught with cigarettes, if you were caught with tobacco products, I mean, that's just clear. But some of the other ones are still... Uh but but some of the other ones are still judgmental.
Yeah, in the elementary, we we, there's a disclaimer in there because, you know, there there may be a an elementary kid that does something that, you know, they're they're in kindergarten, they pick up something they're not supposed to, bring it from home, and they don't bring it with the intent that maybe a high school kid does, so there there's a little leeway and discretion in there that the schools can use based on the age and the maturity level of the the kids, so there's some of that built in. Uh but as you were saying, Mr. Rickett, that it that is, that does help us, they pull those, and you know, that's how they determine on your own, I don't know if it's gonna be called a report card accountability form, whatever it's gonna be called, that's how they determine if there's a persistently dangerous school, by pulling those codes and seeing if you've got so many instances with weapons in a school and that that kind of thing, so um it is information that we have to have accurate and consistent, because they pull it each year to uh run those state reports. But if you have if you have particular questions, if if you wanna um email me or reach out to me, I can I can get uh email. I was not in these meetings when they went over all this with the assistant principals, but but I know that she meets with them and they they talk about it and they hash it out so that they're all um comfortable with it and on the same page.
If you have some areas you want to have Ms. Hughes come and discuss, please.
Sure.
Let me have it known, we can have her here. Any other questions for? Okay, then the instructional services?
Yes, and Ms. Ms. Hopkins is uh celebrating a major birthday with uh her husband, and it's the first time, I think, they've had all of their children at home in quite a while, so she's taking the night off tonight, uh but Ms. Douglas, I think, is gonna lead our 4K update, so.
I will. So I have to change hats now?
Well, I have to.
I know, okay. So a couple of weeks ago, I was here talking about the PIP program, and now I'm gonna try to update as well on the 4K program and kind of where we are and where we hope to be going. So, let me see if I can figure out this little-
And before you even get started, just to make sure everybody understands the difference, PIP is generally three-year-olds, can be four-year-olds, but those are students who are determined to have special needs, whereas 4K is more of a general curriculum for other students, but we do, we do not have universal 4K where all students get to come. We still screen the students and pick those who are, I guess, most at risk-
Yes, sir, and I'll talk about that a little bit, yeah.
So it's kind of three-year-olds for PIP, special needs, four-year-olds, it's pre-K more of a general curriculum.
Right, so the PIP students go through Child Fund, which is a little bit of what we talked about last time, and then they enter a special ed program, which is the preschool intervention program, if they're identified as having developmental delays or special needs. 4K, however, is a, it is considered an intervention program, it's a state program. In twenty-fourteen, it started out as the Child Development Education Program, and then this fall, they are in the process of switching the name, it seems like every year they do a little tweaking to make it just a little bit more difficult to keep track of, but it's gonna now be the Child Early Reading Development and Education Program. So it's just encompassing a little bit more, even though we were doing all of that anyway. So we have grown the program the past three years, we've added four new CDEP classrooms. And we call them CDEP classrooms because that's how we get our funding, and those children have to qualify for the program based on the eligibility criteria. So with that growth, we now have a four, at least one 4K classroom at every elementary school, so that's great. Currently, we have um our capacity for children is three-hundred-and-seventy-six. We're not quite at that number, and I'll explain that a little bit more as we go through. But you can see in the Seneca area, each of the elementary schools have two classrooms, so they can house forty children, because there's a cap of twenty um on those classrooms. The Wahala area, um they, James and Brown has three classrooms, they can have sixty. Kiwi has two, Tomasi Salem and Wahala L both only have one classroom. And then the Westminster Elementary, you'll notice that the Westminster Elementary number is down a little bit. That's because the size of those classrooms, they can only house eighteen children per room. They can't house the twenty.
You're talking square foot.
The physical size of the classroom.
Thirty-five square feet for a child.
Right. So um-
Seven square foot room.
So if we had a little bit bigger room, we could bump that to twenty, but with what we have right now currently. So the specifics, like I said, each classroom can have twenty children, except for the Westminster L. The eligibility status um is based on student risk factors. That is why we have to screen the children. They come through and they do the Dial-4, which is a developmental indicator screening. And then while the while we're screening the children, the parents are actually completing some paperwork that indicate other risk factors that we look at, and then those children are given overall scores, and we place the most at-risk children first based on that, their whole developmental screening that we've done. Each of the CDEP classrooms has to meet all of the DSS childcare licensing laws and and the CDEP guidelines. So um you know, CDEP guidelines are here, they require also all of the DSS guidelines, and so it's it's a lot to keep those- Please, yes, sir.
I'm fighting that, um right now, the law is written that just because we get CDEP funding, we have to meet all of the DSS guidelines, which those guidelines are in place for daycares, and I understand why a private daycare, so if if my wife and I opened up a daycare in our home, DSS would need to come in and evaluate our home and make sure it met certain guidelines. And they apply those same guidelines here at the school district, well, I don't think it's necessary that DSS come in to our schools and tell us, I, it just doesn't make sense to me, just because we get the funding from CDEP. So Pickens County does not get CDEP funding, so their 4K programs do not have to fall under DSS supervision, whereas ours do. I think that's, uh it does cause us problems, mainly with certification of substitute teachers and some things like that that have caused us a lot of red tape. So I am actively trying to get that oversight removed. Um I've talked to Senator Alexander, I've talked to people at the State Department, I've talked to people at SCASA, so we're we're trying to change that, because it's it's a hassle, and and as Ann said, it's a lot, it's-
It's tremendous.
It's crazy.
I mean, for like, even against folks like that, it's, I mean, it's ads work to everybody, it's just-
A substitute teacher can substitute in a three-year-old PIP class or a five-year-old kindergarten class with just our normal hiring procedures here at the district office. But to substitute teach in a 4K class, you have to go to Greenville, submit fingerprints for a special background, pay for a medical screening that a doctor has to say, it's just crazy.
You have to have a central registry check.
It's crazy. So we're, I'm I'm fighting against that, I haven't been successful yet, but I'm gonna keep trying.
We're trying, yes.
And it has to be on file.
They have to carry a folder that has proof that they've jumped through all those hoops with them every day that they substitute, so they have to carry a an envelope.
A yellow folder everywhere they go.
It's just-
And I have a copy of it in my office, just in case.
Well, and all that could be in the HR office, if they ever questioned it, they could just, but instead, we have to have paper copies like we're operating in the nineteen-eighties, and it's really-
And the other thing we have to do, part of those DSS guidelines are um, the teachers have to have twenty hours of additional training, and the assistants have to have fifteen additional hours of training above and beyond what the state requires our teachers, like for in-service days and their just professional development. And so, you know, I'm const, and it's, it's just a, you know, again, it's just, we do a lot within the district to make sure that our teachers and our staff is prepared for those classrooms, and then we do additional um, you know, so that we can meet those DSS guidelines. But we're working on it, we're working on it.
Another governmental duplication and a waste of money.
Absolutely.
So also, though, just with these specifics, the past two years, I have not been able to fill the 4K classrooms with eligible children. And so we have done what we call a fee-based, so that non-eligible children through a lottery, it's strictly a blind lottery, can attend our 4K programs if there's space, we, again, can't go over that number of twenty, and um, you know, and their parents have the means to be able to pay that.
And again, just to clarify, that is, if if one of the programs has eighteen CDEP-eligible students, we're gonna, of course, put those eighteen students in, but those two remaining spaces, if we don't have a CDEP-eligible child, we'll open essentially a lottery, and we'll tell 4K parents, if you've got a child that you would like to put your name in the hat, and and we literally draw names.
And I don't do the drawing.
We let students who are not otherwise eligible, in other words, we're not gonna get state funding for them, so we let the parents pay. We don't, i- it's a little bit less than we get from, well, a lot less than we get from the state, but it's-
Do we have much of a a demand otherwise that don't get in on the lotteries? People that say, "I would like to go, but we can't take the so many."
Yeah.
We can- If we just opened it up and told people that it was free, that you could just get 4K just like you get 5K?
Eligibility or whatever.
Then we would probably fill-
Which I would love to be able to do, I mean, you know, if I had an ultimate goal, that would be-
We don't have the rooms, are the-
Well, and we would, and and not getting the funding for it, with a, for a CDEP-eligible child, it's roughly forty-five-hundred a student-
Right.
That the state gives us per child, so if you take twenty children in a class, ninety thousand dollars, we're more or less cover, not not completely covering expenses, but pretty close. But if we were just to open up a class and it was fifty percent CDEP and fifty percent normal student that we're not gonna get funding for, then that would be quite an expense to the general fund.
Very much needed, I mean, you know, just in our Oconee County, but yeah. So currently, this year, we had forty-nine children that were CDEP-eligible that did not enroll in 4K. That being said, there's multiple reasons, some are foster children, and they end up going home out of county. Some go into foster care out of county, um and so those are some of our children. Also, um some parents decide um they just won't keep them at home, and then some decide they wanna keep them at the daycare where they are, and they may be getting ABC vouchers or, um which is a way to pay for the daycare through DSS and Medicaid, I believe, is the ABC vouchers. And so we have those children, and then we just, we're very transient, people come and go in Oconee County. So, you know, we, there there are forty-nine kids that we kind of missed out on, which is unfortunate. So right now, we have three-hundred-and-twenty-eight CDEP-eligible students that are enrolled. We have forty-one fee-based students, which is a tremendous number of fee-based, and if we had those forty-nine eligible here, then we wouldn't have had, you know, necessarily all of that high number of fee-based. So currently, um we have three-hundred-and-sixty-nine students that are enrolled in the 4K. Um that's including the CDEP-eligible and the non-eligible children, and we did, you know, and we had three-hundred-and-seventy-six spots that we could have filled. The child, the children that I now have on the waiting list, either when I have called parents, they've made other plans and they don't wanna move at this point, um they were fee-based, fee-based meaning non-eligible children, and so there's, the parents just can't pay. And so at this late time in the year, it's it's very hard, if a child moves out from me, to fill those spots. Typically, this time of year, if a child moves, the only children I will accept into the program is ones that have moved from another CDEP program. And sometimes we do get those, or they move even within the school district.
And just as far as comparison, three-hundred-and-sixty-nine is about fifty percent of the typical class across our school district, so if you took all the tenth graders in our district, it's generally gonna be about seven-hundred-and-fifty students per grade level. So that's about fifty percent that we're serving.
If we have more students that are eligible than we have room for, we're not obligated to add another classroom? We just put them on the waiting list, or?
We put them on the waiting list and we take the most at-risk students first, and so, yeah, so like, if Westminster had forty-two kids eligible, I would rank them all from highest to lowest and take those. And last year, we added two classrooms, um which we were really excited about, but um it, you just run into that problem, you know, and you can't make the it's not like regular, you know, the upper elementary grades or K through five, K through twelve, can't make them kind of school if their parents choose to.
And we could add classes again, but we've got a couple of problems. One is, as long as we've got fee-based students, that means we're not you know, we're we're losing money if we add programs, because it's gonna be more fee-fee-based students. And then the other challenge is space, physical space in our elementary schools. We have to make sure that there is a location that we can host students, so.
Okay, so um where we're headed just a little bit, um so South Carolina has new early learning standards that will be implemented in um August of eighteen, so there are six domains in those learning standards, and you can see play and learning, health and physical development, emotional and social development, language development and communication, mathematical thinking and expression, and cognitive development, those are the six domains. And we call that Plurning, because in 4K, they learn through play, and so a lot of those classrooms are very active, I mean, you'll see them, you know, if they're not down on the floor playing, trying to figure it out, we gotta work on that, so, but we have um adopted a new curriculum for next year that is very um, it's gonna be great to address these new six domains of the early learning standards, and the new curriculum adoption is based on one of the CDEP requirements for us. It's called Big Day for Pre-K, and I actually go Wednesday of this week with a couple of teachers to start the training on that. So just our overall goals in 4K is to implement the new South Carolina learning standards, to expand the 4K program by offering extended day and or extended year if we can, which is something we talked about this year a little bit, but we're just not ready yet to do that. We would love to even, like you said, um add more classrooms, but again, we have to have that population that we could support that. You know, and just kind of a personal goal, if I could somehow wave that magic wand, I would love to have two, at least two 4K classrooms at every school, because I just think that helps um, you know, with that interaction of the other children, and we did have a 4K classroom at Hamilton Career Center for one or two years, and that was great location, but the students didn't interact at the elementary level, you know, they missed out on a lot, so we, you know, we worked on getting that classroom moved and into, it actually went to Ravenale. Do you have a question?
Oh, how is the, once these children leave the program, have we tracked them to see how well they performed in the upper grades?
Well, um since I've been here, for, I mean, this is just my third year, but um they do very well, and when they enter kindergarten, they are, they're ready. You know, that's the biggest hurdle that I think we really notice right now, is the ones that have not attended the CDEP program versus the ones that um have kindergarten, is a breeze for them, because they know the school, they know the you know, the procedures and routines of just the day-to-day school.
Would, Ms. Robertson, can I put you on the spot? Would you chime in on what you see with your students?
Absolutely, um I would a hundred percent agree that by kindergarten, those kids who came through our pre-K program are definitely ready. Um instructionally, um big time, and, but two, if they're already in the 4K program and there is a learning disability, we have an even earlier time to catch them and get them further intervention and help, but absolutely, the 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 kids, even from personal experience with my own child, but um also in the whole kindergarten is much easier for those kids um and excelling even more, and I remember when I came here five years ago into the elementary school program, by the end of the year, you would occasionally see some writing a full sentence. Now, for the past two years, I've seen by December, our kindergarten kids writing a full sentence on their own, and that's typically an end-of-the-year standard, so definitely, definitely helpful.
Do you think there's a, uh, a need there though for other children to attend?
Yes, sir.
That when they come into kindergarten, they're not as ready and prepared?
Um, I actually emailed Mr. or Dr. Floris on because my concern is we have so many parents who aren't aware of how great these programs are and how much it benefits their child to go and have them in the school building. And it is, it's difficult watching those parents separate from those kids in the morning, especially in August and September. They just don't understand what a great resource it is to have, um, right there in our school building. So, yeah, I, I do think that we need to reach out to more and have them understand what great benefit it is for our district and for their future.
And this year, well, I do think we're doing a better job at advertising, like for the four K screenings so that we can get the children in to be screened. And I'm also gonna rigidly track where the children attend that choose not to come to, you know, the CDEP programs.
I think it would be interesting. Also though, with the follow-up, sort of like Ms. Rookett was saying, this year's the first year that third graders who don't read on level and so on was supposed to be retained. How many of those kids that don't meet that standard did not go?
Right, and we'll have to look at that.
Program and, and how many did? I mean, I, I, I think that's one of the reasons. I'd love to see us being able to add more four K programs. Opening it up to everybody. It's expensive. We'd have to pay for it somehow. We'd have to have more classrooms.
Right.
But I think it would really help us.
And I've investigated a little bit the cost of daycares in Oconee County. And we are charging considerably low for the fee-based kids. But, um, you know, you really wanna target the population that, that we need to be in the classrooms. All of them, but some more so than others. And that's it?
One more question?
Yes, sir.
On the testing side, have you had any problems? I guess our numbers are determined by our tests. How many tests we've given these kids, correct? Did I say that right? The screening, the screening side. Have we had pockets of areas where we have a hard time getting information or getting the children screened? Have we had?
I have not gotten word of them not being able to be screened. Prior to me in, coming into this role, they did do screenings in each attendance area at a centralized location. So they may do, um, I think they did, um, they did them at the church here in Wahala.
They did them at church Westminster in Gillette and Sunaca.
Mm-hmm. And so that, you know, they could, so that attendance area would go to that.
Go to that.
Mm-hmm. And, um, you know, again, I haven't, nobody has specifically said to me, I can't get the screening. And if they did, I would really try hard to get to them, just like I do with the Child Fund, you know, if we needed to do that. You know, so I can't, I can't say that that's the way it is as far as.
But it is something we have to advertise.
We have to advertise.
We actively pursue these students. And, and we do. They, they have, uh, billboards in the county that.
We hadn't done billboards anymore just because of the bang for our buck. It is so expensive to get those billboards.
When was the last time we did this?
Um, a couple of years ago. But I send information to pediatricians, churches, all the daycares. I send all the schools information and they push it out.
Signs at schools.
I do, I have like roadside signs at each school, um, you know, that says to call for four K screening. I ask that you guys push it out on social media, and I know you send it out to the newspapers and.
We send it to radio stations and I think we try to get it.
And a lot, this year, we've kinda tried to ask, how have you heard about, and a lot of them here through Facebook. You know, so the social media is definitely helping. So, um.
You were talking about, you know, you're banging for your buck, but i- if this works, if you can prove to us that it's something that we need to pursue. I think the factor, the, the problem's gonna be, do we have a facility big enough to handle it? In other words, the rooms, you gotta deal with the screening and then you gotta say, do I have enough room?
Cause that's usually the room with a bathroom and, and others, certain requirements and with the.
You're talking about the classroom?
Yeah.
Classroom.
Sinks and different things that, that come into that DSS.
Thinking, thinking in the future, there are districts that have early learning centers.
Yes.
Where district consolidated four K programs, where you don't put them at the elementary schools. You have a center where all the four K programs exist together.
And then we just, we bust them?
And you would bust, so if you, you know, took somewhere in the bounty land areas, center of the county, where you would run four K.
I would love it too if we could even, like if we were able to do a, a, a early learning center to be able to include the PIP children into that because then you'd even give them more opportunities to, for the socialization and.
I'm not sure we should, uh, put that on the list in front of Seneca Middle School because there'd probably be a lot of people politicking against that.
They might not like that.
After Seneca Middle School, it would be something that could be considered for sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other question?
I will say, the, our first screening this year, we did on February twenty-third, and we screened a hundred and thirty-eight children on that day. We have five days, um, late April, starting on April the nineteenth. We do Thursday, Friday, Saturday. We're doing a Saturday screening day for those parents that couldn't get off work. Um, and then we're gonna roll over into that Monday and Tuesday. So if y'all want to see some fun stuff, you just come on, April nineteenth. Just wear your running shoes, yes. So, but I would love to have you come and just kinda experience it because I don't think until you really see all that goes on, you have a good understanding for the screening and the, just the process. So that'd be great. All right. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams, do you have anything other than executive session?
No, we are busy recruiting and, uh, we're back to regulations.
All right. We need a motion then to go into executive session for personnel items, employment recommendations and changes, and a student discipline appeal.
Mr. Chairman, I move we're going to executive session for personnel items, employment recommendations and changes, and a student discipline appeal.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor. Be unanimous. Thank y'all for being with us.